Okay.
We're running.
Okay. Well, we'll go ahead and call the meeting of the Angola Council to order for Monday, March 8. The rule call is Councilmember Coffey.
President.
Councilmember Olson.
Eric.
Councilmember Sharkey.
Here.
Councilmember Rowe.
Eric.
Councilmember McDermott.
Here.
Well, we've got to congratulate Trine University Basketball, winning the first ever NCAA Championship. Head coach, Laura's staff did a great job and we have to congratulate all the talented and skilled basketball players. I don't know how many of you watched the game. I'm sure you probably all did. An exciting 29 and four championship season. But you know, Trine University has a lot of other great regional and national recognized programs. Softball, triathlon, even their sports management program has gained national and regional recognition. So to honor all of the Trine athletic and academic programs, I've requested the monument to be lit in Trine blue for the remainder of this week. Right Scott?
Thank you.
He's beginning to charge it. Well, Chris, approval of the March 4th minutes.
Who do approve?
Second.
Motion is second and a discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. The minutes of the February 5th Board of Works and Safety Meeting are presented for your information. Is there any other unfinished business for this evening? Hearing none, we'll go on to new business. Ordinance number 1750 2024. An ordinance amending the Angola Municipal Code Title 13 Public Services, Chapter 13 Point 15, Stormwater Management for the first reading. I think Amanda probably sent a letter to all of you. She's not here to address that this evening.
I will vote to approve ordinance.
Second.
Your motion is second. Any discussion?
Yes, please. I'm concerned about the legality of this. Who drafted this?
I can't answer that. Amanda presented it.
I believe it was, I think Chrissy could say, is it Wesler Engineering that was the consultant on this?
Did they involve any attorneys?
The attorneys were involved when they, when we sent it to Kim to review. This was a this ordinance was modeled after the LTAP model, Stormwater Ordinance.
Well, what my concern is, and I'm looking at 1315 250. If as a result of the storm drainage system inspection, a discharge is suspected of a illicit discharge, the City of Angola may inspect or obtain stormwater samples from storm runoff facilities to submit a discharge to determine compliance. On request, the discharger shall allow the City of Angola properly identified representative to enter upon the premises of the discharger at all hours necessary for the purposes of inspecting and sampling. I don't think that's constitutional. The mayor is the state here of the United States Supreme Court case, also Marshall versus Parlam. And in Indiana, it's State versus Kokomo Tube Company. We have to give them an opportunity to consent or not consent and to require that there be an administrative search warrant issued. And this ignores that. And Indiana's not clear on what the position would be, but it could cause us to be declared unconstitutional. And it's a simple fix, but I think that needs to be there. It's not there and it's not proper. It's not constitutional, I don't think.
Do you have comments?
I'm going to reread it. I didn't see, I compared this to the existing ordinance. I didn't see a similar provision. Maybe I missed it, but I didn't see a similar provision. But this applies whether it's a permitted use or whether there's not a permit required. It applies whether it's private property or public property, whether it's commercial or residential. I don't think it passes constitutional muster. And I, as a judge, I used to issue administrative search warrants on occasion and know that those things exist. In the, for instance, in Title 16, there's a specific statutory provision that allows the Health Department to get administrative search warrants. There's no reason that this shouldn't include that. That's why I wondered if an attorney, the drafter should know this, I would think. It's been since 1967 that this law or that those rulings have existed.
Councilman Coffey, is that your only concern?
That's my only concern. The rest of it's fine, but I, I don't want to see us liable in some kind of civil rights. 42 USC 1983 action where somebody's denied civil rights or, or where we can't come on and it ends up with somebody getting arrested or something like that. And the problem is it goes on to say that if you don't follow this particular provision, that you can be fined $2,500, which is the statutory limit, and $7,500 and then so much a day after that, which makes it punitive, which means even more so. It's a problem constitutionally.
Would be my suggestion for this evening that you go ahead and pass it on the motion in the second. It won't take effect until the third reading and we can answer those concerns at the next meeting. Is that satisfactory?
Well, for me, I think it should be written correctly before I can vote for it.
Yeah. Would you like, you can vote no.
That's what I would probably, and I wanted to, I wanted the council to know all of my concerns were here.
Well, if it passes, if you, if it turns down tonight, then it dies. We can table it or go ahead and approve it on first reading and then answer any legal issues you have to your satisfaction before we, but if you'd like to vote no tonight. But it's entirely the council's discretion how you want to handle this.
Okay. Yes. I just gotta say, with three readings, I think we have time to check this out.
Well, either table it or approve it tonight. One of the, I would recommend you do one of those. Kind of procedure of changing Councilmember Coffey's concerns. Would you prefer it or do we send it to whoever?
Well, I would, if Mr. Mayor, I would suggest that I get with Councilman Coffey and Amanda Cope, obtained the draft, which I made a couple of suggestions about, but I didn't notice that. And it sounds like it is an easy fix. If it needs to be fixed.
Wow. I think we should table that.
That's fine. If somebody wants to move to table.
I would move to table it.
Second.
Your motion is second to table. Any discussion?
I just say refer to items, general permit, because a lot of this was, I think, in response to some of the regulatory changes at the state level. So just make sure that if there's any changes that are done, that it still complies with what I believe our MS4 department has held to from a state level.
It can be fixed with two sentences. In the event that, that I can, I can come up halfway with it right now, in the event that someone would not consent to such inspection, whoever the authority is would apply to the Steuben Circuit Court for an administrative administrative search warrant. And it's very simple to get those. It's probable cause, but it's not probable cause like you think of in a criminal case. It's that there's a right to inspection and some concern.
Yes, we've obtained those warrants many times on behalf of the city and on the back behalf. That wouldn't alter the thrust of the law at all, so.
Now we have a motion, a second to table. Reiterate the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. We will get that resolved for the next meeting. Ordinance number 1751 2024, an ordinance amending the zoning map of the City of Angola. 520 North Wayne on first reading. Jeffrey, you want to give a brief explanation of what we're doing?
Sure. This was a former gas station and service location. It has been empty for many years. This is just self mama's place. It's currently zone C1, which does not permit auto oriented businesses or uses. And they've requested to rezone to C2, which would permit that. The intent is to open an auto repair facility. There was environmental concerns that the owner, Linda Parks is here this evening. She can speak to all she's done remediating it. And they are aware of that moving forward. In the Plan Commission unanimously recommended approval with some conditions regarding the site itself. Those are up here. As far as, you know, making sure we're meeting some development standards, which the applicant did agree to at the Plan Commission here.
Who do approve?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
Has the, has the gas tanks been taken out?
Yes. Linda is.
Gas tanks have been taken out.
Gas station, or the tanks have been taken out and the soil has been removed.
Is there a proposed tenant already, Linda?
Someone has talked to Craig about renting it. I don't know who.
I just want to park. I want to go for breakfast.
That's good. We have a motion of second. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Annual report of the Redevelopment Commission Treasurer is attached. Ryan, do you have anything you'd like to add to the reports?
No, pretty standard. We do this every year. It's just the report of the redevelopment commission's activities for the year. Revenue received for the allocation area, 167, 862 and 41 cents. No expenses. One balance at the end of the year, 748,893.20. No outstanding obligations and weren't paid last year. So that's it.
Any questions, Orion? Discussion, discussion regarding the possibility implementation of a designated outdoor refreshment area or what state law refers to as a DORA. Jennifer, and I'd like to, when we get through this conversation, I'd like to keep this at a fairly high level and I'll get into that here in just a few minutes. Jennifer, would you like to give us a brief explanation of what a DORA is?
Sure. Mackenzie and I have dug into DORA as they've been called around the state. They're fairly new that we're allowed to do these. They're out, just want to say it's outdoor refreshment areas. A couple of cities or towns have implemented them across the states. The training that Mackenzie went to, a lot more people are getting ready to do this. What it is, is usually a cup is sold at an adult establishment, I don't know, wherever alcohol is served, that they can take that cup and walk around a certain designated area. This can limit times, you know, through the year, through the week, seasons, different things along those lines, as well as the actual locations. It's, they can be just during special events or all the time. It's really up to the council. The reason we're bringing this up, the way we have, is there's a lot we need to work on to figure out what's best for Angola. So we're asking what, how would council best like to work on this? Is it a certain committee we want to work on together? I think we talked about Board of Works because it is, you know, on our public areas. I forget some of the other ones we talked about, possibly maybe even a special committee. So basically it's, do we want to continue the conversation at this time?
Basically, if you're interested in pursuing this, I am. We're trying to get more life in our downtown area. We're going to have more festivals going on with our Main Street program. And this is one more thing we want to add. We have not got any bad feedback from communities that have got this. Obviously, there's got to be some sensible limitations. Our first stop was our PD and asked our police department if they would object to doing this. They, they did not have some objections, although they would like to be included in the, in the limitations of hours, locations and how it's used. The devil is always in the details. I understand that. What I'm going to recommend, but it's entirely up to you because it's an ordinance that you're eventually going to have to pass. What I would recommend is, is let the city administration, the planning people, my office and folks in City Hall kind of come up with a draft ordinance to it with limitations and thoughts to it. We either take it to the Budget and Service Committee, or if you'd like to establish your own working committee of council members, a couple of council member working committee, we can do that also. I would recommend the Budget Service Committee because that group was already in existence. We work through any details that they want to, want to iron out and then bring it back to the, to the council for their final approval and with looking at all the limitations that are contained there. I, I hope that's a sensible way to go about doing that. I, I don't want to waste a lot of time if the council isn't interested in pursuing this. If the council's totally against it, then we can drop it. We won't spend any time on it. But what we're asking tonight, is the council interested in pursuing this for, at least for our downtown area?
I think, yes. I think I, I could pop see the advantages perhaps of special events. I certainly wouldn't want to see it every day. I mean, someone will walk around the mound and go back where they came from. I mean, to me, a special event like the car show would be a perfect example
Exactly.
of what will
That's what we're thinking. That's what we're thinking. And you like the process of letting the administration write an ordinance, take it to the Budget Service Committee for them to hash out, because that usually takes a good bit of time and then bring it back here. Is that an acceptable way for the council? Just kind of a straw poll tonight?
Yes.
You're all in favor of that?
But, but you're, you're, you're thinking that it's going to be just downtown. We're not going to move it to.
There might be, there might be a time where you could walk from the downtown to the park. Fourth of July comes to mind. There's school limitations and some other things in the law that we're going to have to work around.
And then special events.
Yeah. Yeah. We, this isn't going to be the Wild West. We don't want that.
I have been Wild West. I like to know, have Jennifer and Mac look into talking to people downtown. Because I'd be thinking that, you know, we've all experienced people go to the store and say, you know, I don't know where I'm going to put this cup at. Here, Libby, you take care of it.
Yeah.
So I like to know what those guys downtown think about that also. And maybe ask them and you in the monument circle, a monument pizza, those guys who are already.
Jennifer, Mac, Aretha, her joke, she, she is the mortal compass. She has some very strong feelings on this. And I'm sure you'll see her handwriting all over some of these things.
Are there any considerations due to the operation of the roadway facility being US 20 with the state and federal right of way issues?
That's my knowledge. It really is the.
Well, that would lock you out of the entire monument.
Exactly. That's what.
Yeah. No, no, we, we will look at all the, we will look at all the details.
We're not looking like at a permanent beer garden.
No. Okay. I'm sorry. We're not doing that for you, Jessica.
Well, I'm okay with that.
And would the parks?
That's a deal breaker.
Would the parks board be involved? Does it involve walking to the park?
Yes, most certainly. Yes.
Thank you.
Very, very good.
And then just, they could buy a special cup at any of the bars uptown. And they would then accept that, that into their, into their facility again.
Yeah.
That's the way.
All right. Well, we'll, we'll start drafting some of these things and we'll get back to the Biden Service Committee and let you know how it all pans out. The next one is also on the agenda because I've asked them just to get a straw poll of the council moving forward, although this is going to be a little bit more complex. It's a discussion regarding the NIPSCO request for cost sharing on an engineering, engineering service agreement or ESA. I've jotted down some notes to kind of bring the council up to speed where we're currently at. I believe you all know what the issue is with natural gas in our community and you all understand what the problem is with the issue concerning our utility, NIPSCO. We've been in discussion with NIPSCO for quite some time and it's NIPSCO's position that the long-term solution for the problem is a new gas line to feed the communities within the county. That is plural, communities within the county. It is also their, their position that this construction should ultimately be funded by NIPSCO and the local entities. To start the project, NIPSCO is requesting an engineering service agreement, or ESA, between one local entity and NIPSCO. We've had in place for quite some time, a working group composed of local government and industrial leaders in conjunction with the Steuben County Economic Development Corporation. Before we changed administrations here at the city, former mayor Hickman and I served on that working group. Dave Olson has now joined that working group along with, along with myself. It's the feeling of this group, a straw poll, no legal action, but it's the feeling of this group that because the gas line, well, the new proposed gas line would lie within the county, that Steuben County should, should execute any ESA and contract with NIPSCO. But first, the county is going to want to see MOUs that would be executed between the county and all other government entities within the county and a prorated cost sharing basis would be established with those MOUs. And this would fund the engineering work to be done. There is a currently a red line edition. I just gave council or Commissioner Howard my copy of it. There is a red line edition of ESA circulating between the parties. I requested some language changes primarily centered on transparency on the part of NIPSCO. We don't know if that language will make itself into the final version or not. Before we spend a lot of time and effort, and then when I say we, I mean the county and the rest of the community spend a lot of time and effort formulating all of these documents that are going to be required. I want to have a poll of this council to see what their level of support is. NIPSCO currently is quoting $1 million for the ESA. The City of Angola estimate is a little over 250,000 currently, although that is not fixed in stone and it is a variable number, but that is a ballpark number that we're looking at. The remainder of the balance of that would be split between other communities within the county and the county itself. I want to be clear, this is not construction. This is just engineering. I put it on the agenda tonight just for your discussion, just to get your straw poll to find out where you're at with this, whether there's support here or not. And also I knew Isaac was coming this evening and Isaac has been intimately involved with this project, I think would be fair to say, along with myself and several other community leaders like Will Howard, Mr. Shipe sitting there. But anyway, that's where I'm at and, and do we have your support to continue with this or not? Now, any MOUs and all the documents would eventually come back here for your approval. And the dollar amounts would be come back here for your approval. But the, but the question is, do you want us to continue down this road or not?
My question is, is if we refuse, I mean, what's our options?
Well, you don't have a lot of negotiation ability with NIPSCO. They either say, here it is or here it's not.
Yeah. Right. So, so we're kind of all forced to play ball with them.
It's negotiating with a guy that's got a gun to your head and he has nothing to lose. So he has.
That's what I was going to say. What choice do we have?
Right.
I do appreciate the work that has been done and the communications with NIPSCO in the last year and a half or so that has gotten us at least to this point. But I don't see any other way. We, we can't.
Since we're investing in NIPSCO, are we going to have any ownership interest in what results? Or is this, this is a gift to them is what it amounts to?
Yes.
Ryan, are you ready to sharpen your pencil?
There's no equity that we acquire in the property. We don't have any equity in any infrastructure.
We're buying future gas service. We're limited right now. I'm currently working with one employer here in town that is considering moving future production out of state because of lack of supply. This won't fix his problem. We need to fix his problem right away. The hospital will be, is, is, is already paid to put in some construction for additional capacity for their project this year. This is a long-term solution. We're probably years away. Isaac, how many years were they estimating?
One of them was a minimum six.
Yeah. So we're, we're talking years in the future to get this problem solved long-term. In the meantime, we're going to keep doing these short-term Band-Aid fixes. I don't see any other way other than just stop growing. And if we stop growing, I am convinced we will go backwards. We will see job loss. We will see employers leave this community. We're over a barrel. We have no.
Is there any help coming from the legislature as far as their monopoly over us and the possibility of other suppliers?
I have, I have talked, I am hoping, and this is just Dave hoping here, that after the, we get a new governor, we may see a little bit of change downstate, maybe. Maybe that's, there's nothing certain about that. I've talked to all of the governor, governor candidates and the IRU RC works for the governor. That's why I say the governor's position is so poor. I've talked with all the governor candidates. Suzanne, I had a nice long conversation with Bennett or the other night. I've talked to Senator Braun, a leading candidate. He is, he is aware of the problem. What we do going forward, there may be some solutions out there to help us fund the construction of the gas line. But I, I think we really need to start with the, at least get the engineering.
Possibility that they're going to say to another gas company in Ohio or Michigan, you can invade this territory since they're not providing service.
Only if you totally deregulate the industry, the way I understand it. Isaac?
That is absolute.
So this project that's the 1 million for engineering service, is this a Band-Aid? Or is this to allow for future growth and what capacity is it adding to?
It is, it is supposed to add significant capacity and that's the transparency that I'm looking at is what kind of capacity are we adding? It is, it is engineering for a, a very high pressure 12-inch line running close to the edge of our town that will feed into the distribution system of our town. Isaac, anything you'd like to add to that?
Their projection is about a 25-year window. If, if we continue to grow at the pace and in my presentation, I'll talk a little bit about that growth.
That was my question. How long are we talking?
So in, in terms that might make a little bit more sense to an engineer, Jennifer specifically, I'm talking to you. It's raising it from a class three to a class four engineering cost study. So that they're starting to determine truly cost factors to have a reliable plan to pull the trigger.
Isaac, is the 25 years, how long will have enough capacity? Are they saying that's how long it'll take to get this all?
That's a capacity window. So if we continue to grow at the pace that we've been growing, so that's about what we're, yeah. What we're buying ourselves.
Is there any way we can get a commitment from NIPSCO on their end after 25 years to provide what we?
It's regulated state. The commitment should come through the IURC and the governor.
And we'll be pursuing grants for construction and so forth. Right now, we're just looking at doing the engineering and starting down the engineering road and partnering with, with NIPSCO to do that. And they are spending their money. They, they have budgeted money this year. They've made it very clear that they would like us to move forward this quickly or they're going to use whatever money they've budgeted for this project somewhere else. So they, they are wanting us to.
Well, we're not going to grow. We are growing. So I think it needs to happen.
I don't think we got a choice. I'm with everybody else. What do we do? We're on the hangman's noose and we're getting ready to be pushed.
You, you, you did answer the question that I asked and I appreciate that. Thank you very much. And we'll, we'll continue working with the, with the county on the ESA and the letters of understanding. And I needed to tell you this, but, and I'm not sure what you can read into this, but the president of NIPSCO did resign at the beginning of last week and he's taking the job in a totally unrelated company. The interim president is a, the president of Columbia Gas, the way I understand it, which is part of the NYSOR system. So it's an in-house company person.
So where are we going to go from here? The county, I hate to put you guys on, I hate, you come and get the. County had any discussions in? Yes. So we, the X amount, we don't know yet, but we're just going to have to say it's somewhere around quarter million dollars.
We'll, we'll continue developing, a quarter million or more. We're going to continue developing those documents, working with other communities, see what are the levels of support there are out there and how we fund and pay for this.
Timeline on that date?
Yet this year, I assume. Isaac, we're probably looking second, third quarter.
Yeah, we're hoping that the ESA can get executed as quickly as possible so that the work can continue on a class three estimate, getting it to class four. So we know what the long-term cost of the project is. That helps my organization so I can go out and help the capital stack in this million dollar investment if it goes up to that mark. Because it is, we're asking it be paid in arrears or after the services are provided. Those can be accounted towards capital stack matching as well.
And your, your discussion's already been with the county. Obviously the head says that. Have you talked to the other municipalities yet?
We started to have those conversations.
I know it's probably been talked of, but.
I know it's probably been talked of, but we have to be real careful that we don't pass any of this on to the users. And I know, that's why I was joking about sharpening your pencil.
Well, I've said for several years that we've been dealing with this now, there's only two groups of users that are gonna pay for this. Taxpayers and ratepayers. It's the only people out there to.
The ratepayers can't pay if the IURC doesn't agree, but the ratepayers pay.
Well, yes. But that's how you, that's how you fund, that's how you fund these projects. Anyway, any other questions on this? Isaac, Isaac, don't be sitting down, because we're gonna segue right into you. Presentation by Steuben County Economic Development Corporation Executive. Here is Isaac Lee.
And then the music plays, right? They do that online. I know, I appreciate it, Mayor, and councils definitely enjoy coming to this body and doing these presentations. This year, you're not my first, you're actually my third presentation, second today. So I'm hoping I'm improving every time I do these presentations. I'm gonna give you a lot of information in the next couple of minutes. Carmen was back there hitting me, telling me to hurry up, that she wanted to be able to go next. I guess she's got a lot of information to tell you. So she told me to go quick. I'll try to do my best. And great segue from the gas conversation into some of the additional work that we've been doing. So thank you, Mayor Martin, for kind of teeing that up. I want to start with a couple of different things. In 2023, it was a really critical year for our organization. Steuben County Economic Development Corporation had been around for 20 years. And over that 20-year period, there's a lot been happening. Matter of fact, in 2012 was the first time we had done a full wide strategic plan for an organization, and it had been since 2012, and we did our last one, which we completed last year. Spent quite a bit of money on a great expert consulting firm to come in and do this process with us. And the reason I think it was so pivotal and impactful was the fact that we included over 270 points of contact across the whole county. Again, when you take a comprehensive plan approach or a strategic plan approach and apply it to the whole county and get that many people involved, I think that says something. So a lot of our plan will talk about that. But we finished that process in 2023. One of the things we learned out of that, which kind of, I knew going into it, we were gonna see this, I just didn't know the magnitude, is that by the year 2050, we're gonna lose 4,000 people. Our death rates are higher than our birth rates. You saw that in the newspaper with the census data, I believe, two days ago. So what that means is, take 4,000 people out of the tax rolls by the year 2050. We know utility costs are gonna go up, that's just natural. No inflation's gonna go up, that's also natural. Sometimes some years higher than others. Again, you have the same common tax, smaller, naturally, cost of living and cost of just being a part of this community is gonna be higher. So we have to build and prepare for that. Net zero is not a positive number. I mean, just having enough people come to the community that offset the deficit has to be more than that. So a lot of our plan is built around that concept. One of the things I want to point to a lot in this document are data and stats and statistics. I'm a data geek really well. I live and die by data and stats. I think it's very powerful when you can explain your situation using that information. So you're gonna hear a lot of that here coming up. Looking backwards, one of the core areas that we spend our time in is consistent through our next, our last strategic plan is business retention expansion. Since our inception, we've worked on 252 projects. I say we worked on these, again, ultimately, the business, the industry is the one making the investment. So we play a small, a critical role in this process. So 252 projects, over $900 million of investment, and almost 4,000 new jobs in that 20-year span. Since 2016, 111 of those projects. And the reason I break that out quite honestly is how fast we started to grow. In 2016, from 2016 till now, over 111 projects, that totaled almost $500 million in investment, retaining almost 13,500 jobs and growing by over 1,400 jobs. New payroll, which communities are always enjoying and looking at from the CEDAT collections, totaled more than $47 million. And we've seen CEDAT growth over the last decade from 1.7 million collected to over 2.8 this year. So pretty impactful numbers when we can see that type of data. From a company standpoint, to adding it to the wages, to the payroll, and then tax collection back, not talking even about the discretionary spending and the dollar flipping within the community. All these numbers play a pretty good role in our ability to continuously and consistently be on the top micropiloton list. By the way, Mayor Martin leaked that out last month, which I told him I allowed him to. It's a great honor, obviously, every year for us to be on that list. But third on that list, we're very excited about. Community this size, it's very hard to be ranked up there with the Findlay Ohios, and I think it's Athens, Georgia was the other one. It's very hard to be on that list in general. There's almost 700 communities that apply. But to be third amongst five other communities in northeast Indiana that get on the list were the highest. A little competition in northeast Indiana right there. But I've happened to be on that list, and a lot of it is because our companies are continuing to invest in our community. They're making that choice, but as Mayor Martin said, that choice is becoming more and more difficult because of the capacity. Also, what I looked at this year, and I shared this at council this morning, is AV values. Now, we know that AV values come back to us in terms of assessed value and taxation, and I know there's caps and things like that that are applied to it. But since 2020, our AV in this community has grown by more than $1 billion. That's a pretty big number too, obviously. So all these things we take into consideration, we take a look at business retention expansions. Couple of the graphs I've showed you just illustrate, one, the first graph talks about the total employment. We've passed or surpassed, if you will, 2020, or excuse me, 2002 employment numbers. I mean, that's the farthest data when my sets go back, or farthest year my set of data goes back. I don't know that we've had more employment in this community higher than what we have today. But would you, would you believe me if I told you we still have 1,100 open jobs?
Yes.
Good, you should. But by the way, those 1,100 open jobs paid at 15 bucks an hour, that's 40 million in annual payroll we don't pay, we don't collect. Add your CEDAT rate to it, it's almost $2 million in CEDAT going on, collected. So it is a talent conversation. We'll talk about that in a second. Annual wages, we're now collecting about $200 million on an annual basis, or, excuse me, on a quarterly basis. And it's a little bit cyclical with summer traffic as well as Christmas time period. Annual average wages, our community over the last six years has made an aggressive adjustment, I would say our industries have made an aggressive adjustment to modifying, modifying their wages to be very competitive. COVID helped with that, but we're actually doing that even pre-COVID, and you can see that in this graph. Business attraction for us is still important, but much more like a surgeon with a scalpel than with your common hunter with a shotgun. We like to know what we're going after, and we like to be very specific, something that complements what we have, something that takes a surplus maybe of talent or something along those lines and applies it to where we can diversify our tax base. So some of the industries we're going after, advanced manufacturing, again, is very critical in our world. Most of our industries that are in manufacturing are B2B, business to business, not B2C. So it's not in the consumer products that you would normally touch, but the copper inside the processor comes from univertical. You don't touch the product, but you touch a piece of the product. And that's what most of our industries do. Biomedical life science, of course, having an independent Cameron Hospital within our walls of the county, that's very powerful. I hope that stays that way for a very long time. Food and beverage, this is something that I'm very interested in, specific to the city of Angola, because the excess water that you treat, that could be a user of that system. Transportation logistics, as well as transportation equipment, and then professional employment services. These are kind of the six key areas coming out of our strategic plan, that many of those points of contact in the community suggested, these are things that we should go after, as well as supported by data, taking a look at our industry clusters. Unemployment rate? I don't have to tell you. We've been low for a very long time. We continue to be low, other than the four months between when we were told to be shut down with COVID. Four months later, we worked our tails off to try to tell everybody you are essential. Essentially is what happened. So we were able to go from 21% down to 4% within a four-month period. I shouldn't say it, we told them how to be essential, but we told them that they are essential. Talent traction and development, this is somewhat of a new space with us. We used to call it workforce development, but some of the things that came out of our plan were, for instance, the modeling skills forecast, really taking a look at what our community, as far as its residents have in their skills base, and then mapping that against our current employer's needs. That type of analysis, though it sounds so, so, so simple, has never directly been done. So we're looking and working with our area providers like Trine University to hopefully do that on an annual basis. We could go out and get a consultant to do that, but I think Trine's got very capable individuals inside its four walls, its four walls to do that. Also, in leadership development, this is a conversation that continuously came up by the providers or the individuals who took surveys and participated in our strategic plan. And this will be also a conversation that we've already started, both with Trine, Freedom Academy, and several other organizations locally. That group will probably grow in terms of those that participate. But right now, it's just kind of formalizing in terms of who needs to be at the table and having that conversation, and what does that look like. Economic development, marketing, and messaging is really about our internal piece, but we have so many more tools at our disposal now in terms of how we see and what traffic comes to our website. I can tell you what companies visit our website and for the duration, and what page. Sounds scary, it's really not. It helps us determine, okay, is our messaging in terms of the talent or the focus on industry really hitting the right targeted industries? Are we seeing that come back, or is it being utilized for something else? And I can distinguish between internal communications, which is the community, making sure the community knows what's going on, as well as external, which is that CEO that I might not be able to talk to firsthand until they've already reviewed us and said, you know what, Steuben County Angola might be the place that I want to make my next, my next business decision. So we track that as well. Finally, community growth, this is kind of a catch-all. It's probably the most fun and entertaining space that I play in, just because it's so different. Any given day, I could get a phone call at 8:05 and be like, okay, this is our next 45 minutes that we're gonna be spending this, this, this time and energy on. Our housing strategy came out of there. Conversations about gateways and entrances into all of our communities have come up recently. This is where the gas conversation lies. A lot of it is within the community development space. So I enjoy playing in it. It's not always the easiest. Case in point, the gas problem. It's very complicated and complex. The next slide, or the next sheet that you have in your page, is really just the support that we've had over the last 20 years, really over the last five-year window. I was hired in in 2016 to push a couple of different things, but one of those in that process was private sector investment. And I'm hoping, and actually, I'm pretty confident that this year will be our third consecutive year of collecting over $100,000 of annual support by private sector. Important when we, when I tell you that in 2003, when we started, we collected none, and in 2016, we only collected $16,000. And then throw in COVID in 2020, where I didn't ask for a single increase. You can see how, how much of a struggle it's been just to get those to participate. The reason it's so important that the public and the private participate in an organization like ours, by the way, is it drives the housing strategy study, it drives the NIPSCO conversation, it drives these other things, the housing, or not, I'm sorry, not the housing, but the strategic plan. It drives these things because we can get that sort of participation. And hopefully, these big obstacles that might seem hard to address to other communities, it allows us to work through them at a coordinated pace. So that's why it's so important. I come bearing gifts. Maybe only gifts for those that are burying themselves in the Indiana code every once in a while. But we've been given some new tools over the last decade, and I think it's, it's time that we consider as a community, maybe looking at some of these tools as opportunities for us to utilize them as we grow. The first is what I've called recently a development district. The Indiana code and the legislature over the last couple of years have allowed commercial and residential growth to be included in tax abatements. Now, I'm gonna shy a little bit away from residential, but we've done that already here with the apartment complex, and I'm really gonna shy away from the single dwelling residential piece. I'm more interested in the commercial growth, as we know that that grows, but our ability as a community, as a governmental agency, to control where that growth happens. Think about where your pipes currently exist, or where you pipe, you want your pipes to maybe loop or circle so that it helps your overall system. These are tools that are able to do that. Now, with this specific one, the economic development targeted areas, you can't have more than 15% of your territory be an economic targeted area, but within those designations, you have that ability to now do the commercial and residential tax abatements under the right circumstances. The second piece, also is a conversation to be had. It's actually something that was done in 2013 but updated in 2022, and it's simply called a infrastructure development zone. And this is much like a spider TIF, if you've heard that language, or a TIF district in that case. The incremental increase around the utilities or the taxation around the utilities have the ability to be exempt over a period of time. That's essentially what this does. So when you're looking at investments, for instance, like REMC, who's put probably $30 million in fiber since they've purchased it from the old Steuben County Fiber Network. That type of growth, again, coordinated, working with them, you have the ability to make sure that every home, every new resident, every new subdivision has fiber at its doorstep when you do things like this. So I'm not making any recommendations, I'm just adding it for food for thought in terms of these are some tools that are at your disposal now that you can incorporate in your development plans. I've gotten pretty good at giving that presentation. Please, Isaac.
Any questions about what you think?
Yeah, please.
When, when you look at employers and employees, do you keep track of the people from Steuben County that go to another county for work and come from another county to work in Steuben County?
2,500, last I checked, which was about two months ago.
2,500, which one?
Both ways.
Okay.
Ironically. So we're about a net zero commuter organization. I'll look that up, and I'll give council an exact number, but it was about 2,500 going both ways, 25 coming in, 25 going out.
And I'm just spitballing this question. Is there, do you have, is there a way to find the reason why they would say go to Auburn Door for San Angola, or just guessing that?
No.
Job we like down there?
I can tell you that almost 800 go to Elkhart. I'm sorry, 800 go to Elkhart. Why do you think they go to Elkhart? So we can kind of make these determinations based on the communities that they go to, of why they would go to. A lot go to Fort Wayne because they're professional service entities that we don't have that type of skill set or application or employer within Angola, let alone Steuben County. So we can drive down deeper within our analytics through JobStrimura, basically how, how that makeup is.
Is that, I'm just wondering if we have businesses in the area that vulture around us and say, you can't have a job here, and I'll pick you to Coldwater, for example, is a good example of the thing. My other question is, in this system, do you give this presentation to the towns and the county? Do you ever give it to school boards?
Yes, actually.
The information that they need to hear?
Actually, the superintendents were on my list, but I have not coordinated those visits yet to give them this full presentation. The closest had been Matt, Dr. Schringhelfer from MSD, and that was just over sharing, a data geek sharing data from his study that he did for the school systems. So in part, how I give this presentation historically had been the communities, of course, and then my board, and then at the annual Invest Steuben event, which we have this week on Thursday. From there, then we'll generally send it out through our news feeds, you'll get the full presentation through our newsletter. We've expanded that to include the school systems this year as working partners. And I'm hoping that working with the superintendents, I can get the school board members there as well when I do this presentation.
Because I know, I know that when I've talked to a lot of people, they're somewhat down on a goal, it's like, you don't understand, this place is really going well. I mean, it, you need some housing, but the economy is, from your data, is, let's go.
Yep.
Thank you. Can I go?
Thank you, I appreciate the work I'm doing.
So.
We'll talk to you. Ms. Hoddle of the Steuben County Community Foundation regarding poverty simulation, a very eye-opening.
Hello, everyone. I'm gonna just put off on my light switch. So as most of you know, I'm Carmen Hoddle with the Steuben County Community Foundation. I am the Director of Community Engagement and Leadership there, and I started there at the end of 2022. You can go ahead and click. That's fine, thank you. I started at the end of 2022, and my role was created to formalize the foundation's community leadership strategy. Jennifer Danic had been involved in a lot of different things, but as the foundation continued to grow, we needed to formalize how we approached that. So I was hired into that role, and it was right on the heels of our 30th anniversary celebration, which I know a lot of you were involved with, the big celebration at first. And that included. And that included thirty unrestricted grants to our thirty most engaged nonprofit organizations. And I know there's some of those nonprofits in the room that were recipients of that. And as a part of that and a part of my new role, the first thing that I was sent out to do was meet with all of those nonprofits and learn what they did with their ten thousand dollars that was unrestricted, they use for anything they want. Anyone that knows anything about grants knows it's a really big deal to get unrestricted money like that. So within my first few months, I started out visiting all of those nonprofits. And there was a very heavy overarching theme specifically from our human services nonprofits. And it was that their clients are invisible. So as we started to have those conversations and talk about why that might be, we started to think about how we could spread some awareness within our community about the reality for some of our citizens here. And we realized, and those of you who know my background, I worked in law enforcement before I came to this role. If you're not in a role where you're encountering people who are struggling, it's really easy to believe that they don't exist. So the conversation turned to how can we spread some awareness, have these hard conversations, and kind of get the community engaged just in what we can do to make this a little bit better. So I started reaching out to some people who might be engaged in this process, might be invested in having these conversations. And this is the team that we got together. Dana Stanley of Purdue Extension. Purdue Extension was a critical piece in this because they actually have the curriculum to run a poverty simulation. Isaac was on the committee for this. Janay Fundingsland from Cameron, Jess Bird from United Way, Jerry McDermott, City Council, obviously, Dan Crusoe, County Council, Joel Greenwood with Ferry Missionary Church, Blake Gross with Tryon University, and then Kevin Deal from Miller Poultry. So you can tell we got a group that was pretty diverse as far as what sectors they represent, who they employ, who they work with, who they collaborate with. And this group had some really fantastic conversations and really thought about how we wanted to approach this initiative. So as we move forward, we have a video, hopefully it plays, it's embedded in here. So just to paint an overall picture, obviously, you saw a lot of familiar faces at that event. Jen, that was your movie debut, congratulations. Sue, you too. But the intent was to get community leaders who might not normally be in the same space, in the same room, get that shared experience and then collect some information. So right now, I'm going to just go over some data and it actually ties really well into some of the things that Isaac talked about. We actually referenced the EDC strategic plan with some of these numbers and also references U.S. Census numbers, Cameron Health Needs Assessment. And then alongside that, I'll finish up with our own data that we actually collected from the participants at the poverty simulation about what some potential next steps are. And then at the very end, I'm going to ask you guys for your input on a survey so that we can start to take some real next steps. These are still really broad. We need to start narrowing it down so we can work together and actually take some action to move forward. So I'll get through this next piece here. You heard it in the video, ten percent of Stevie County residents live in poverty. That is the U.S. Census number, which means it's the federal poverty guideline. If you talk to the schools, MSD right now is sitting at forty-six percent of their students qualify for free and reduced lunch. And I think that is a more realistic number that represents how many people we have that are actually struggling to meet their needs. So some overall factors, you guys have heard all of this before, but it's just combining all this data into one to say that we have identified the problems, we need to start to identify some solutions. But factors to take into consideration are going to be education, income, housing, transportation, childcare, healthcare, and community services. I just clicked my thing like I can click it next. I'm like, where did I go? So again, this is a federal number, sixty-eight thousand dollars is the median household income for a two individual household in our county. And to paint a picture of what that might look like, the average cost of childcare in our county per child is six hundred and forty-one dollars a month. So start thinking about how those costs break down and add up. The math doesn't math. Healthcare, access to services for uninsured and underinsured individuals have continued to be in demand. You're good, I'm trying to cruise through here. We included the food insecurity rate in this, again, a national number based off of numbers being reported by food pantries in our county. So it's a ten point eight percent insecurity rate. I can tell you that our food pantries are seeing a really big uptick in the number of families, like we're talking double compared to a year ago, who are seeking assistance. And there's a lot of factors, but one that is pretty prevalent are senior citizens coming in for more assistance due to just fixed incomes not surviving in the current economy. That ten point eight percent breaks down to over thirty-seven hundred individuals. And then again, dental and health services at no-cost clinics are in demand. Housing and shelters, the big one. Housing is a community-wide issue. I know you guys all know that. And it stems from the end that we don't have emergency housing, all the way to middle-income families who want to move here for work but can't find a home. So this is actually referencing the EDC's housing study. Actually, I think this was an article that you guys posted pretty recently. The median home price in our county is just under two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. I've had multiple realtors in the room when I've given this presentation who will very vocally say that that is a cost of a home that you cannot find in our county. And if you go and look right now, it's very hard to find anything in that price range. It's usually one extreme or the other. And then we start just breaking down some basic math again. If that's the price of the home, if you have a twenty percent down payment, which is pretty significant if your annual household income is sixty-eight thousand dollars. If you have that twenty percent down and you lock in at the approximate seven percent interest rate, that fourteen hundred a month is your monthly payment, that's not including insurance, utilities, taxes, anything like that. That is literally just to have the house. So again, we're just trying to paint that picture that you can be working and this is bigger than just poverty, that ten percent below the federal poverty line. Transportation and commutes. Our rural nature, just like any other rural county, poses some challenges for us. You can go ahead, Jennifer, thank you. Again, this is a census number. The average commute in our county is just under twenty-two minutes. And then you guys are mostly familiar with star transportation, which operates on first come, first served basis or by appointment, obviously only six to five. So there's not a lot of options. I know we're working on better walkability and safe routes, things like that, but options are somewhat limited. So that was the overarching picture. We did the poverty simulation. You can go ahead and click on Jennifer, thank you. Did the simulation and like I said, collected input from everyone who went through this. So we could one more forward. Something I want to point out for anyone that wasn't there is we did have this panel that opened for us. It was Tia Books, Leslie Schlatman, Alicia Johnson, who's with Bo in center, Melissa Higbee with FICO, and then Mike Wood with the Angola Police Department. Tia runs the ACE Academy for MSD of Steben County, which is alternative high school that's located in the old high school building. And last year, when she participated in this for us, she was at ninety-nine percent of her students, not at the McKinney Bento forty-six percent, like free and reduced lunch poverty level, they were at the federal poverty level. And some of them were sole providers for their households. So we tried to create this panel that could speak to their experiences with the clients and people that they're encountering in our county on a daily basis, just to help paint that picture of this is very real. And there are a lot of people who could use better circumstances. You can go ahead, Jennifer. So this is going to be the data that we actually collected from the participants. Oh, I want to stop myself. I know that Jerry gave you guys the survey, those of you who did not participate in the simulation, gave you guys the survey. I tallied your results and I'm so happy to say that overwhelmingly, your input matches the community input. So our samples match. We also gave these surveys at FICO, at food distribution, collected over a hundred responses from clients who were actively receiving food distribution and their responses matched as well. There were no major discrepancies. So to me, that was really reassuring that we're on the right path. So the top three issues that were identified to be addressed were transportation, housing affordability, and overall coordination of services. You can go ahead. Top roadblocks for low-income families are a high cost of living and sufficient access to quality childcare, reliable transportation, and again, a lack of coordination of services to assist individuals actually utilizing all the services that we have available. The top services to support low-income families, childcare assistance, increased transportation options, and affordable housing programs. Top areas to invest in to improve overall quality of life. So this question was geared toward really what can we do just to make our county better? Increased childcare affordability, infrastructure development. So this was a much more economic development side, which matches the conversation that was occurring earlier, and then mental health and wellness services. And then top strategies to encourage cross-sector collaboration. We believe that cross-sector collaboration is a really key piece in improving some of these things. And we've had a lot of conversations about how do we formalize our collaboration? So when it's not all the people in this room who like to work so well together, that we continue to work together. So some ways to do that are going to be countywide cross-sector planning, implementation, data sharing for informed decision-making, and joint funding and resource sharing agreements. These are all just formal collaboration pieces. And Dan said it, oh, go ahead, Jerry.
Just a quick question.
Yeah.
Since the simulation and the conversations, I know you've always worked with each other, but have you seen that improve or seen more of it since you've been working with us?
Yeah, honestly, even since starting in this role, I've seen it through the actual service providers, boots on the ground. Interagency meetings happen once a month across the nonprofit sector. And I've seen a lot, I've seen improved communication and coordination. It seems like there's a little more motivation to make sure that everyone's clear on the services they're providing and helping connect that for clients, but it's still very informal.
Thank you.
Yeah. So Dan said it best in the video, everyone has a role to play and none of us can do it alone. Our entire community has to align under one plan that'll help us help those in need, improve their situation, and sustain themselves moving forward. That idea that we all need to be shooting toward the same thing in our own different lanes. So thank you guys for your time. I am happy to answer any questions, concerns, anything that you have. And then there's a QR code on your handout and on the screen. And anyone in the audience, too, please follow up the survey. We partnered with Tryon University's Cutler School of Business. We have four seniors, one's graduating with MBA, the other three are bachelors that actually created the survey, are analyzing the data, doing some independent research, and are going to be reporting out with recommendations for next steps for us. So we need the input.
Is this the same survey or a different survey than we took?
So this will be different. That initial one was to help kind of narrow the topics and questions, and this one's going to be much more solution-oriented.
Can you explain? We had, I did this, sorry, coordination of services.
Yes.
Could you explain that to me a little more in detail?
Yeah, absolutely. So it's a really broad term, right? But it all ties back to that formal collaboration piece, and it can look a lot of different ways. Like I mentioned, interagency meetings, that is a very informal, but we can formalize that more, placing MOUs between entities, finding ways, if there's a duplication, to get them to work together better, and finding a way to help navigate someone through the services that are provided. We have a lot of fantastic services in our county. How do you know about them? How do you access them? How do you find them? So finding a formal path for people could be really helpful. Some communities, communities specifically with emergency shelters, this is a really good example, someone shows up at a shelter and needs assistance, they get a caseworker, they get someone that guides them through that process. We don't really have anything quite like that here. So it could mean that. And then on a bigger scale, when we talk about this community-wide planning, there could be an opportunity for an organization that's equally represented by all sectors, someone from, elected official from the city, elected official from the county, foundation, schools, religious sector, all that work together under one umbrella, EDC, and apply for grants, look for funding, that these bigger initiatives like housing, that's going to take more than just one entity. But coming together and actually having that formalized organization. And again, that would give that opportunity that if it's not you and me and all these people who love to work together, ten years from now, they still have this organization that's going to have the equal representation with the expectation that they're going to work on community-wide projects together. So it could be scaled.
So how are you going to do this? Because there's going to be turf wars all over the place, I'm sure, and funding fights.
That's a great question. Well, first off, we need some input from, on the surveys. We're trying, we are hitting a lot of community groups with this presentation. We need a lot of input to see what the community wants. That's going to be the first step and seeing honestly what the recommendations are from the group we have that's going to be reviewing and doing the information. I know they're researching some peer communities to see what they've done, some feasibility studies. We essentially have consultants that are working on this. So I think following the community's input on it is going to be the key piece.
Do you think you're going to get buy-in from the various service organizations?
As far as?
Coordination, I'm trying.
I think so.
At school days, we always had that. We knew that, we just knew it. But the coordination wasn't there. So I don't see how you're going to get the coordination.
Yeah, like I said, it's happening informally right now. So I think the momentum has started. That's what we're seeing. I think that's what Jerry kind of alluded to. The momentum is there. How do we capitalize on it and keep that ball rolling? And that's where we're at right now.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you for what you do to those that live on the margin, if you will. We have a lot of them, and it's very tough. The simulation was very eye-opening for a lot of people. It was kind of a role-playing exercise. When I went through it, I thought, you know, this would make an amazing board game as opposed to moving around. Instead of doing a tabletop version, thank you.
May I have to give an anecdote from the simulation?
Please do.
The one thing I took away from it is that wife and I went out and had a small lunch after, after the simulation at Pizza Hut. Nothing major, nothing extravagant. And I realized our fake family couldn't do that, you know, and it hit home. And I kind of shared that with her at that time.
Very, very eye-opening, yes. Uh, where are we at here? Clerk Tracy, 23 summer, a statement, cash reconciliation for the month ending, February 2024 is presented for your information and is attached. Reports, Clerk Tracy, Ryan, do you have any for us?
None for me, man.
Legal?
I have no report, Mr. Mayor.
Nothing.
Sue?
Yes, sir.
Chief Call?
No, no report. Go ahead. No, sir.
We're just in the room real quick. I think we're up to Assistant Chief Taylor. No report. Oh, my goodness. Request approval allowance of accounts payable about your $67,646, your $67,893, totaling $768,319.2, including interfund transfers, for $41,756.56.
Approve.
Hold on a second. Any discussion? Hearing nothing. Commissioner Howard, do you have anything you'd like to say? Thank you for coming this evening?
No, I don't have anything at this time.
I mean, I mean, Councilmember Shite, do you have anything for us? Anything for us this evening?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate your presence.
Do we have any other new business?
I would like to see on the agenda next meeting, the FAP study information that we enable for council.
It will be attached to the agenda. Anything else? Next council meeting, Monday, April 1st. No kidding. Monday, April 1st. Where are you? Thank you all.